Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, and welcome to the second meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. We met earlier this week on Monday for our organizational meeting, as required by the Highway Vice Code. I would like to again welcome our new Commissioners, Lori Kukowski, our Vice President, and Ted Kallo, our 3rd Board Member. Leadership Lorraine County has a calendar that they've given out for this year. And yesterday's thought by Maria S. Curl, who's a volunteer and a 1998 leadership graduate, said, "To one whom so much is given, so much is expected." And the County Commissioners Association has a website, and it tells what the duties of a county commissioner are, because I'm sure you were asked often what a county commissioner does. I'm still learning what a county commissioner does. Sometimes you do just whatever you have to. But the conclusion says, "County Commissioners must be astute and have good business sense. Perhaps the most important attribute of a county commissioner is the ability to lead, to listen to the needs of the citizens and other elected officials, to compromise and to develop a consensus on priority issues to improve the county." So I think we're well honored. Welcome.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
And a Resolution Number 1, Job and Families Services Bill?
I move for approval.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Kukowski?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Advances and repayments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Aye. Oh, second. Second.
All right.
I speak too.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Bills?
Second.
So moved.
Oh, I didn't hear you there. Second. Nothing to worry.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet from boys within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners.
Commissioners, at this time, I'd like to hold this item and request an executive session for the express purpose of discussing new hires.
Thank you.
Authorize the exemption of expenditures of $1,000 or less from prior certification requirements, and continue the policy of fixed assets of, and this should be $15,000, not $2,500, or more. Assets currently capitalized will not be affected.
Do the Commissioners have any questions on this? There was material that was given to you to read, and you all...
Yeah, I read it.
We caught up on it.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Approve payment to victims of domestic violence, Lorraine County Safe Harbor, Inc., DBA Genesis House, for the amount of $34,170, as collected by Lorraine County for the period of July 1st, 2004 through December 31st, 2004. The collection and payment are pursuant to ORC Sections 2303.201 and 3113.34 through 39, payable by January 15.
This is something we do annually, and I believe that Lorraine County Safe Harbor, i.e. Genesis House, is the only one that complies with the specifications, so it's kind of, um, it's routine. So I'll move for approval.
And I'll second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Authorize the salary increases and longevity pay for various personnel at Lorraine, Overland, and Avon Lake Municipal Courts, reflecting the county's 2/5 share effective January 1st, 2005. For Lorraine, Thomas Borowitz, bailiff, longevity pay a biweekly rate from $684.79 to $686.25. Administrative Judge Thomas J. Elwell Jr. at biweekly rate from $950 to $973.08. And Presiding Judge Mark J. Mihawk at biweekly rate from $973.07 to $950. At Overland, Sandra Kuhart, clerk of court, at biweekly rate from $676.92 to $769.23. Sue Smink, bailiff, at biweekly rate from $491.23 to $500. And in Avon Lake, Melissa Dunham, clerk of court, at biweekly rate from $692.31 to $713.08.
These are more or less our proportion 2/5 share. I don't think we have a great deal to say about it.
No choice.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Uh, I'm sorry, Elizabeth.
Elizabeth, Raul makes Overland. Number 2 under Lorraine, Presiding Judge at a biweekly, as these were supposedly raises, uh, the agenda says from $973.07 to $950. $973 to $950. Is that a typo?
No.
No, it's correct. The judge, Judge Mihawk, was administrative last year. Now, Thomas Elwell is administrative this year, so they switch on and off, and it does decrease by some odd dollars.
So it's a different position?
Yes, it's administrative judge to presiding judge.
Thank you.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
13, approve a change order #1 to Western Waterproofing of Ohio, Inc., Broadview Heights, Ohio, in the credit amount of $3,426.82 for the parking garage expansion joint cover assembly replacement project.
I'll so move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Authorize the appointment of Tim Balda as Lorraine County APR Inspector for the year 2005. Compensation is established at the rate of $9.60 per hour, with mileage reimbursement of .30 per mile. Funds have been appropriated and general funded in the amount of $3,400 for FY05.
I believe Tim is here in the audience. Would you like to stand, Tim? And how many years have you been our APR Inspector?
This would be my 2nd year.
Your 2nd year. Thank you very much. I don't know if you know what an APR Inspector was...
It's a B Inspector. I was wondering how many times you've been stung.
I'll so move.
Second.
Further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Thank you, Tim.
Award various bids to Mulk, Sales, and Gerglies for the toilet tissue, paper towels, trash liners, and cleaning supplies for Lorraine County Administration Building, Department of Job and Families Correctional Facility, and Golden Acres. Bids were open on November 29th, 2004, and these were the most responsive in line with specifications.
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you. We all attended a meeting out at the college concerning countywide purchasing, regional purchasing. When I came back from that meeting, I looked at what we were currently bidding. This bid contains about 200 items that we've competitively bid, everything from toilet paper to paper towels, bleach, for our county facilities, we believe, we'll need for the upcoming year. I'm going to offer this out to the Community Alliance and PSI, to all the other municipalities and townships, should they want to come in, and if they have a need to seal bid, any of those products, because they're purchasing in a large enough volume, and want to use our bid spec, they can. So, pursuant to that meeting, and I think it was everybody's desire to try to have that intergovernmental cooperation to save some money, specifically having the bid, even if you're not saving it on a specific product, uh, so I just wanted to let you know that we're pursuing that issue, and we're going to start with this bid right here.
Great idea. I'll so move.
Second. Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Approve change order #1 to Whitlock Group, Middleburg Heights, Ohio, in the amount of $6,950 for additional work in Lorraine County Justice Center. Said change orders for previous parts and labor to wire carts, manual switcher, judges' bench, and audio playback. Funds are available from the Justice Center Q Construction Account, 400040201491501.
Commissioners, we still have ongoing work at the Justice Center. You'll see some of these things coming through as we go through punch lists, and we're finishing up on our technology, and finding out, do we have enough technology? Is the technology working correctly? This requires no new additional funds, but the project isn't concluded yet, and we're going into phase 4 of the project. And I haven't had an opportunity to really brief you too deeply on where we're at, but the Whitlock Group was the one that did all the courtroom technology. After using it for a while, some of the judges wanted some changes, and they were good changes, because, like anything else, once you install it, you've got to wring it out and see how it's working. And we'll have some of this stuff coming through periodically, and it's not going to be a lot of cost, but it'll make the courtrooms and the Justice Center the best possible facility.
Thank you. I'll so move.
Second. Further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Community Development Department, award a change order to Minority Electric, Lorraine, in the amount of $450 for additional emergency home repair assistance for James and Ann Simons at 93 Pike Court, La Grange Township, from Lorraine Emergency Home Repair Activity for fiscal 2003, and will be paid from account 126032501450422. Resolution 04-778, approve this electrical work, and this change order is required to install the electrical service conductors per code from crawl space to the panel inside the house.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Instruct the clerk to advertise notice to the public, a finding of no significant impact notice to intend to request release of funds for Perry Fiberglass Pullman Investments, LLC, Avon Lake, Ohio, using Lorraine County revolving loan funds. This notice will be published in the Chronicle Telegram on January 14th.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Under Solid Waste, authorize Lorraine County Solid Waste Management District to offer program in support of office and mixed paper recycling to all, and to provide additional support to the paper recycling programs of schools and nonprofit groups, and to generally publicize the options of paper recycling in Lorraine County. Authorize to expend up to $40,000 from its program implementation funds for recycling containers, advertising, and promotional efforts between now and December 31st, 2006.
Dan, I noticed you have a new tie-on, so maybe you'd like to tell us about your program? Oh, I didn't notice he was color-coordinated. That's why you're not allowed to speak. I think it looks nice.
Thank you, Commissioners. Dan Vilman, Solid Waste Director. This program has actually been in effect probably for the last year. We piloted it throughout the county. It's done in cooperation with a company that came in and asked us to give them names of the schools and nonprofits, and we gave them that ability to have that information from us, and they went out and got the schools and some of the nonprofits to participate in the program. So it's been up and running, and it's been, it's very good. At this point in time, what we want to do is expand, and let everybody in the community know that this option is available to them. It will supplement our Blue Bag program, as far as paper goes. In this program, you can recycle newspapers, white paper, red paper, blue paper, doesn't make any difference what it is. You can recycle comics, you can recycle slick paper, which is your magazines that you get at home. Unlike the Blue Bag program, where the Blue Bag program, you can only put in white paper and newspaper. So it's going to supplement that, and it'll, when we do it within the schools, it's going to make the awareness, heighten the awareness of the schools, school kids, and hopefully they'll take that back to their parents, and get them to recycle not only their paper, but all the other things that they can recycle. Interesting note came out of ODNR the other day, and it's been widely publicized nationally now. The survey that they did was a waste characterization of some of the landfills in the state, and out of that, they came to the realization, the numbers of the tons that were in the landfill of paper. It was 42 percent of all the garbage put into the landfill, there's 42 percent paper going into the landfills. Now, we in Lorraine County, with this program, can keep probably an awful lot of that out of the landfills. And with this program, we're going to do some advertising, we're going to do, put out some desk-side boxes to anybody that wants them, businesses, schools, other communities that want to get involved. And then we will also put out, in place, some larger containers, that you take the small containers and put the small ones into, so custodian for the schools or the business can take it out and put it into a bigger container. The program is basically, that we're going to do, is just give out the containers to them, and help them get on board doing the recycling. And then that will give us another opportunity also to get into the schools and get into the businesses, to get them to recycle more. Interestingly enough, we have Invicare on board. What they're doing is they are donating their paper tonnage to a school in Elaria. So all their recycled paper that they get, which they'll be keeping out of the waste stream now, which will save them on their MSW side, their municipal solid waste, in their dumpsters they put in there, they can reduce their costs in that respect, and then also be able to give the schools this tonnage, and the schools will reap the benefits, because they will get paid per ton for the paper that's going to be given to them. So, all in all, I could go on for probably a half an hour, an hour, speaking on this. Yeah, Jim says, "Let's go." But this program's a very good program, like all of our programs. I think they're something that we really need in the county, and be happy if you approved it.
Thank you, Dan. Questions?
I'll move for approval.
A second. Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Approve an entry in contract for Environmental Enterprises, Inc., Cincinnati, Ohio, for HHW Collection for the years 2005 and 2006, at no additional cost, to be paid from account 202015302450101, contract services. The sites of collection are the college and JBS.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Workforce Development Agency, approve an entry into various contracts in behalf of WDA, effective retroactive to January 3rd through June 30th, 2005. Joint Center for Policy Research of Lorraine County Community College, to perform a service relating to resource mapping of youth development programs in Lorraine County, in the amount of $13,995.50. And Boys and Girls Club of Lorraine County, for the delivery of leadership training for wheel youth, under Title 1, in the amount of $35,000.
Juan, do you have any comments?
The WDA.
Oh, okay. I guess you don't have any comments. Thank you.
I'll move for approval.
You're in the same building. You're guilty by association.
Any further discussion?
There you go.
Ms. Blair?
Not really. Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Under the engineer, authorize the posting of low limit signs at state weight limit reduction by 25% on various county roads for the thaw and moisture period, in accordance with ORC Sections 5577.07, effective February 1st through May 1st, 2005.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Approve an entry in contract between ODOT for the realignment of Columbia West River Road at the intersection of State Route 82. Installation of traffic signal at the realigned intersection. The widening and resurfacing of SR 82 to incorporate left turn lanes on both approaches, lying within Lorraine County. Total work length of project beginning approximately .72 miles. County agrees to contribute up to $200,000 of OPWC funds that was approved and received in round 18, towards the construction of the project in state fiscal year '05. ODOT is now prepared to bid this project for construction this spring or summer, and the application is due on January 10th, but we got an extension of time.
Okay. Yeah, we did get the extension, so...
Anything else, Jim?
It's okay. No, I, we were, we, Theresa and I had discussed this, and we made sure that we could get the extension before we put it on the agenda, otherwise you would've had to deal with this Monday. But rest assured that we contacted Columbus, and everything's fine.
Okay. I'll move for approval.
Second. Further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Authorize the engineer to participate with ODOT in State of Ohio Cooperative Purchasing Program, in accordance with ORC 5513.01B.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Authorize a 10-ton limit to be placed on Waterfall Drive Bridge Brentwood Village, Carlisle Township.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Revise the permanent county maintenance on Dolly Ditch, Ian Township, and remove parcels 1100047000014, Jesse and Ula Seabolt, and parcels the same, except 15 on the end, Peter Philip Bitch, in the amount of $30 assessment each. Lorraine Soil and Water Conservation District was responsible for this project, and the county engineer has agreed to take the annual maintenance charge from $283.02 to $223.02.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
MRDD, reappoint Daniel Jude White and John D. Cole, and appoint James R. Cordez as member of Lorraine County Board of Mental Retardation and Developmental Disabilities, effective January 13th, 2005 through December 31st, 2008.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez, County Administrator?
I have no reports this morning. Just to remind the Board that I request an executive session at the conclusion of our business day. Thank you.
Mr. Anis, Assistant County Prosecutor?
Hopefully, I won't jinx the Commissioners, but I'm pleased to report that you've been Commissioners for 10 days, and you haven't been sued yet.
Give us time, Jerry. Give us time.
We can talk about all the candidates.
Commissioners' report?
Commissioner Kukowski?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Kallo?
Just like to say, thank you for being here. Hope we have a great 4 years.
A new report.
Under the Clerk's report, just to let you know that I did receive the proposed E-Northwestern Proposal Business JED Agreement on January 7th.
Cherry? Do we, uh...
Just so you understand what's happening there, and I think you also have one that was submitted from Amherst. Procedure on that is that immediately when the municipality and the township submit a proposed JED, they have to set it up for public hearings. It is required to be immediately filed with the Board of Commissioners, just kind of for your information at this point in time. What's going to happen is they will have public hearings, they will decide if they are going to enter into the contract. If they vote in favor of it, they will sign a contract, and then you will get the signed version of this contract. And then there will come a time when you have to act upon that agreement. So at this point, it's just for your information.
Thank you, Jerry.
Word of correspondence?
I move your reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
I'd just like to introduce Joe Robertson from Seasoned Good Mayor, who's in the audience. Nice to see you today, Joe. He does business with the county. Jimmy, you want to say anything?
No, he's our bond underwriting firm, from our bond underwriting firm, so that's his role to county.
Thank you for stopping by. Is this public comment now?
Yes.
Since I cut you off...
Just do whatever you'd like to do.
I'm sorry, Theresa. David?
Lorraine Commissioners, David Aschenhurst Oberlin. Since Commissioner Kallo greeted us again on tape, I will too. Welcome to the new Commissioners, and we look forward to a good 4 years also, and some of us very much like this nice, transparent cycle between the posting of the agenda for these meetings, the openness of the meetings, and the availability of the tapes of these meetings following up. It's, it wasn't here when I started coming to these meetings several years ago, and we're glad it's working so well now. A couple of other very quick things, and I wasn't really prepared to do this, but I guess all I want to say is, there are 2 places on the agenda today. One, in the Board Correspondence, where number 8 reminds us that 4 people from Children's Services will expire on February 10th. I think that's their membership on that board that will end on February tenth. But between that and mentioning the reapportment of two individuals and the appointment of the county administrator on the Mental Retardation and Developmental Disabilities Board, just a couple of things about that. Commissioner Blair has heard me before ask about the appointment process of people on boards that are accountable to the Board of Commissioners, as well as the appointment of county employees, Commissioners' employees, on boards that are accountable to the Commissioners in a different way. Now, I know that some of those happen as a matter of ex officio or requirements of those kinds of boards. I, I say this with the utmost respect for our county administrator, as I did with the utmost respect for our Director of Personnel several years ago when he was appointed to the Fair Housing Board, but I just wonder if the Commissioners will develop for our benefit a philosophy of when it is appropriate and when they might reconsider appointing their employees as opposed to employees of other jurisdictions to boards under their authority, and when those interactions are, as they say, when they're ex officio, that's obvious that that's who gets appointed to them. But when it is not, I just would like at some point a kind of a process and a philosophy of the Commissioners in that respect. Thank you.
I think that's a very good point, David, and I would just like to say this. From my perspective, there was a lot of consideration over this appointment, and Mr. Cortez served the Lake County Board of Mental Retardation for a number of years, so he has an expertise in that area, and he has a strong desire to give back to the community apart from his services as the administrator. And he asked to be appointed, and the other Commissioners can speak for themselves. I thought he had enough to do, but he wanted to do this, and, you know, when he wants to do something, it's kind of hard to say no to him.
I don't say no to him. Thank you.
Well, I do occasionally. Anyone else from the audience wishes to address the board? Did you bring any bees with you?
No bees.
Good. Then we'll let you speak.
Very quickly, just two things. First, thank you for appointing me for the second year. Last year was an honor to serve my fellow beekeepers and to serve this county, and it's a very unique way to serve the county and its residents. I am truly grateful for the opportunity. It's, it's, there are no words. The second thing is unofficially, I'm also thanking you for the Lorraine County Association of Beekeepers. A letter will be forthcoming. In this day and age of budgetary constraints, we know that the county's dollars are very important. Every single dollar is very important. And the Lorraine County Association of Beekeepers is also grateful for the appropriation that has been granted and my appointment, because we do a lot of educational programs, we do a lot of things for young people, and we know that every dollar counts, and we're going to make the best of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Tim. Elaine, you're going to talk to us. Elaine Gorgas.
Good morning, Commissioners, and welcome to the new Commissioners. Elaine Gorgas, G-E-O-R-G-A-S. I'm the Executive Director of the Alcohol and Drug Addiction Services Board. A comment to Mr. Ashenhurst, we are one of the boards that by law have county residents to serve as members of our boards, and the Commissioners each have appointing authority. We are always turning over members. The terms are four years, and we all, we have vacancies. I know mental health system has vacancies. Teresa has been great. If anybody is interested in becoming members of boards, either under the jurisdiction of the Commissioners or other political subdivisions, contact the Commissioners, and I know they can target your interests and where there are boards that have needs.
Can I, uh... Expand upon Elaine's comments. Thanks, Elaine. We have a lot of boards that have openings, and what I'd like to do is post our applications on the internet so that people can pull down the applications for those boards and then submit them to the clerk, via v. the clerk, to the Board of Commissioners. Sometimes we have problems having people serve, and we have vacancies, and then we have other people who want to serve and never show up. I believe they probably have the best intention, but they find that there is a lot of personal time and effort involved. And I want to thank Ms. Blair for her kind comments, because when I came back from Lake County, I felt a compelling desire to continue my work at the MRDD, because I had worked there, and I wanted to contribute back from the things I learned there, and this is going to give me an opportunity. Should I find that I don't have the time to give the proper amount of resources, I will certainly vacate my seat in favor of somebody who will be able to give more time. And there's an additional opening at the MRD that's still available on that board, and there's several on the Workforce Investment Board, and obviously some in Children's Services coming up. I think you always have openings, Elaine. You've got a lot of work to do out there, too.
Additionally, some of the boards have requirements, so you can't just be a citizen.
Correct.
There are some, you have to have a certain balance on your board, too, so. Shirley?
Shirley R. Johnson Oberlin. I think it's very important for people to know about these boards and their vacancies on them. I don't think it's enough to post them on the internet. I think it would be a good idea if you could persuade the newspaper to not only publish a list of your needs, but, but some information about those boards and the duties and the services they provide, because I think then you will get more, perhaps get more people interested in serving.
That's a good comment, Shirley. Thank you. Any of the newspapers listening? I see Phil's taking notes.
Phil's not saying anything.
Well, he took notes. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you for coming. Appreciate your attendance. I move that we go into executive session for the purposes outlined by the, uh, thank you, um...
Ms. Blair?
Administrator. Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at nine-thirty at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
We have a lot of elected officials here this morning, invited guests, way too many people to introduce. I just want to thank you all for coming out. And while we get started here, I want, please ask everybody to stand up for the invocation by Pastor Terry Barris, to be followed by the singing of the National Anthem by Megan Campener. And then the remains standing while we present the colors.
Dear Heavenly Father, we recognize this morning that you are a holy God and one who ultimately administers justice. You are a God of order with expectations for us to conduct ourselves in an orderly way. You are one that acknowledges and appreciates law and order, but I'm also thankful, God, that you are one of mercy and grace and love. So, Lord, we invoke your presence into this place. Let this establishment truly be representative of justice, but as with you, let it also be known as a place of mercy and compassion and grace. Father, I ask that you would give the judges wisdom and insight to preside fairly. Let every man and woman representing this center do so with distinction. I thank you for them, and I ask that you would bless their efforts, strengthen their resolve, I pray. Throughout Scripture, you remind us that you are a redemptive God. You take what is old and damaged and restore it to newness of life. Lord, you told your people through the prophet Joel that you had restored to them the years destroyed by pestilence and plague. In 2 Corinthians 5, the Apostle Paul tells us that you are the one that declares our past to be gone and behold, all things to be made new. So, Lord, we thank you for what we see before us, this new justice center, and we ask that you would bless it. We thank you for what this place represents. Blessed, I pray, bless and strengthen those involved. In Jesus' name, the strong Son of God. Amen.
What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? All the red parts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Truly, the building of this new Justice Center was a team project. It included assistance from the county maintenance, purchasing, office services, budget department, and the Commissioners, people in the Auditor's Office, Mark Stewart's people who attended to the accounting issues, folks in Dan Tellerick's office who watched over the bond proceeds and invested in for positive arbitrage, to the people in Sheriff Stemedie's office who concerned with security issues and worked on the team to make sure that those things were properly accounted for. And for all the people who ultimately ended up being housed here in the Justice Center for not only working on design issues with the team, but for making a very successful move-in and therefore thereby saving hundreds of thousands of dollars on the move. To my friends in the prosecutor's office, they were very flexible and fluid throughout the whole event. But there was a smaller team, a nucleus, a core team, that guided the project from start to finish once it was assigned to us, and I'm going to introduce that team to you very shortly. In the fall of two thousand, we publicly announced in the Commissioners' hearing rooms to the Commissioners that we would build, we would deliver this building on time and on cost. We felt that that was an achievable goal. I remember very shortly thereafter, Mr. Ennis leaning over to me and saying, gee, Jim, I don't know if that was such a good idea. And then later on after the meeting, I remember Mr. Rokase coming up and saying, Jim, you really did it now. But there was no fear, no regrets, at words misspoken, promises maybe hastily made. It was a realistic promise, an achievable goal, and one that we were fully not only going to deliver on, but we were going to over-deliver on. In November of two thousand and one of the team meeting, someone there asked about the goal, and I said, don't worry about the goal. Don't be concerned with it. There was a little relief on their face, but it was short-lived. Obviously, somebody wanted to know then, if we weren't worried about that goal, what was the goal? And after a slight pause, I said to them, our goal is to deliver the building ahead of schedule and ten percent under budget. The construction manager's rep sat motionless for a while. The architect's rep looked a little pale. We were told it couldn't be done. The project had already been value-engineered to death. It was simply not possible to get any additional savings from the project at this late date. After an hour or two complaining, we adjourned that meeting. We had a couple more meetings thereafter. There was still some more complaining, but each time our response was, if it wasn't a challenging goal, it wouldn't be a goal. We were going to achieve it. We were going to do it. We were going to end this discussion, and we're going to end this complaining, and we're just going to get it done. This was a team goal that wasn't shared with anybody outside that core team. We had made our commitments publicly, but this was a private commitment for the folks on the team. Over the next several months, at each meeting, we made sure the goal was discussed until it didn't need to be discussed anymore. Everybody knew what they had to do, and everybody set about doing it. Not only will you find out that we have met our goal, but we were able through the Commissioners' programs to keep over eight million dollars of local procurement here. Ninety-five percent of the labor on the project came locally. Everybody participated, and all of Lorraine County participated. We made the project look easy, but it wasn't. We started out by losing our crane right after our groundbreaking. For thirty days, we had inactivity. Our crane got waylaid on the side of the road somewhere in West Virginia, not to be seen for a month. Really wasn't looking good, and I was starting to wonder about those promises. We had the second snowiest winter on record. We had two prime contractors go bankrupt. We didn't get our occupancy permit for the building until hours before we were moving in. Most people didn't know about these things, but the team did. The team worked through these issues. We never lost sight of the goal. We found unique and inventive ways of dealing with every problem that came along. And at the end, to my surprise and amazement, not only did the team meet our goals, they over-delivered on the goal. The new center was moved into several months early, and at last count, there were approximately eleven percent under budget. I am therefore proud to introduce to you there right now this team, and I'm going to ask you to hold your applause until they all stand up. Bob Likeit from Gordon Collins Boswick, Randy Gordon, Gordon Collins Boswick, Rick Sias, RP Carbone, John Vergala, RP Carbone, John Rokase, County Budget Director with the County Commissioners, and Karen Davis, Special Project Manager with the County Commissioners. Today, I take personal pleasure in commending you for rising to the challenge, for accomplishing more than just the ordinary, more than just the routine, more than just the minimum. If this was an Olympic, you have achieved gold medal status. To the Commissioners and the residents of Lorraine County, I thank you and say job well done today. And before I pass the microphone, we have a little ceremony for the Commissioners. In honor of the Justice Center Lorraine County grand opening, a United States flag is presented to Commissioner Mary Jo Vacy, Commissioner David Moore, and Commissioner Betty Blair. This flag has been flown to the Justice Center in the courthouse to signify the transition from the old to the new, and in recognition of Commissioners' outstanding dedication and commitment toward continued partnership on intergovernmental issues for the betterment of Lorraine County. With that, I'd like to introduce you to the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners President this year, Commissioner Betty Blair.
The quotation from vision to reality makes it sound as though we had a great plan to begin with. In actuality, my former administrative assistant Gloria Krattler and I took a walk during lunch and decided to inquire about the purchase of the old Y, associated buildings, and the city of Illyria's parking lot. It took quite a while to accomplish the acquisition of these various properties. Our original goal was to provide additional parking with an eye to the future regarding construction of a building. I believe it was former Commissioner Herb Jacoby who began calling this the Justice Center. Thanks, Herb. At the groundbreaking ceremonies, I commented that the future was upon us indeed, and today it certainly is. There were hundreds of hours of meetings as the project took shape. It was completed under the leadership of county employees Jim Cortez and Karen Davis. Thank you for joining us this morning. We hope that you are impressed with this forty-five million dollar investment the county has made on your behalf. At this time, we have some gifts for the cities. I'm going to call your name. If you would raise your hand so the parties can find you. Our next speaker that I am to introduce is Lorraine County's first woman Judge, Judge Lynette McGough.
Thank you all for coming. You know, this Justice Center began, and I think Betty's right, when Herb Jacoby began to talk about it long, long, long ago. And it is the culmination of the hard work of absolutely everybody. So I want to begin by saying we love our new building. We have bells and whistles that work. You know, those of you who spent time in my courtroom, you remember the ninety-degree days in the summer when we opened the windows to let the air conditioning out because we could keep meat in my courtroom. You remember the days in the winter when we opened the windows to let the air in because it was ninety degrees and we couldn't breathe. Our thermostats work. I want to say especially, though, that the process of moving in, the process of getting this task completed, Jim Cortez, this was put on your plate, and you and your team have done a good job. Of course, the Commissioners handed this task to Mr. Cortez. Mr. Cortez dealt with the architects, and Mr. Cortez dealt with the design engineers, and Mr. Cortez chaired the meetings. The person who had to deal with the nine of us, the clerk of courts, the county sheriff, and the prosecutor, you know that old saying about water runs downhill? You know, we're accustomed to running our own departments and running our own divisions. So Mr. Cortez passed the task of dealing with us down the line to Karen Davis. Karen returned our phone calls. Karen listened to us when we talked about furniture. Karen came over when we needed her. Karen still comes, and quite frankly, I hope that with some of the savings, somebody in the Administration Building will send Karen on a thirty-day trip to somewhere warm with a white sandy beach and give this woman a raise. Thank you, Karen Davis. And I hope that you will all take the opportunity to come and look at what we have done in Lorraine County. And now, at this time, I want to tell you that it gives me great pleasure, you know, those of you who remember when I took the bench some fifteen, sixteen years ago, it was Lynette McGough, first woman judge in Lorraine County, like it was a hyphenated part of my last name. Well, that's not true anymore. We have two other women on the bench, and I'm about to introduce one of them. She was a prosecutor in my office. She was a good prosecutor. She was a good prosecutor. Actually, she was a great prosecutor. And now, she sits as the current administrative judge in the Domestic Relations Division of the Lorraine County Court of Common Pleas. Please welcome Judge Deborah Burroughs.
Good morning, everyone. It's good to see all of you. I guess I want to start out by thanking each and every one of you. We've had an opportunity through Judge McGough to thank the believers and the people that had the vision to put this building together. But there were also many, many people involved, the public, the people that worked on the building, the people that helped us move the boxes, the people that put the bricks on the building, everyone as a community that was involved in building this justice center. And we also would like to thank all of you for building us a great building. Also, some of you probably don't remember, but I vividly remember my first experience in public office as an assistant prosecutor for Greg White, and I had a desk in a hallway with a chair. I think had he had a closet, I probably would have been there, but a desk in a hallway with a chair. So these accommodations are the best I've ever had. I thank you for that, and I plan on being around for a long time to remind the people coming in now that won't remember how bad it was before. I'll be their reminder. I also want to say that I am also the judge that was in the separate building from everybody else. In Alirio, we have a tendency not to remember what buildings are named, but what they used to be. So let me just tell you, the Old Bobles Building, that's where I was. And I was separated from the rest of the Domestic Relations Court Judges, Judge Lilly and Judge Bazinski, and I really never had an opportunity to have much involvement with the General Division Judges or with the Probate Court Judge. So I have really enjoyed and appreciated the opportunity of all of us to be in one building under one roof. I believe that we can get business done effectively and efficiently amongst ourselves, but also we're able to get day-to-day business done in a much more effective and efficient manner. And I believe that we have many people to thank for that, including the Lorraine County Commissioners. I can't say that Karen would probably say it's always been a pleasure working with us, but it certainly has been a pleasure working with her. I would imagine the Commissioners wouldn't always say it's been a pleasure working with us, but it's been a pleasure working with them. As in all ventures, there are hiccups, ups and downs, and there are meetings. Some are very cordial, and some, although professional, not so cordial. And in the entire process, I have to say that it did not bring out the worst in people. It brought out the best in people. And I think everyone is to be congratulated for this building. And my staff and I thank you very much for the opportunity to work in such a wonderful working environment. Thank you. And now, I would like to introduce one of my fellow Domestic Relations Court Judges, and that would be Judge Paulette Lilly.
Good morning. I believe the weather is one of the indicators of what a great tribute this should be to all of us to be able to enjoy this new facility and what it offers all of the citizens of Lorraine County. Not to dwell upon the past and the process that brings us here today, but I too need to reflect upon the conversations that I think began in 1996 when this vision came to light among the judiciary as we sat in the old courthouse and began our discussions and more often, our debate about how this project could ultimately bring itself to fruition. And then, we were a bit skeptical about not only the financial ability of this community to finance such a project of great magnitude, but the ability to coordinate the efforts of everybody to actually see it happen. One of the benefits that I see now is the ability to better track the bar from the bench's perspective. As one of those who were situated in the administration building as opposed to the courthouse, when we were trying to find people to get the work done, we would continuously hear myself and Judge Bazinski at that time, because Judge Boris joined us a few years later, oh, they're across the street. Well, you couldn't find them. It's been a real pleasure. Now you can listen to the intercom, and you can actually start to hear where the lawyers are at because you know at a glance where they are and where they're supposed to be. I need to mention two people among those that I'm not specifically pointing out who from the Domestic Relations Court were instrumental in facilitating from our perspective this whole project, and those are the Court Administrator Susan Ward, who I guess fortunately for her and unfortunately for us is not here to share in today. She is in Hawaii with her new grandson, her daughter, and her son-in-law, who's in the military, who is now back in Iraq. It's unfortunate that she can't join us and take credit for all that she did in making it a little bit easier for the Commissioners and others who are working in this project to deal with us because oftentimes, she served as a buffer in collecting our opinions and then sharing our perspective with others involved in this. But I would be remiss if I didn't mention the hard work that she offered, along with Charlotte Bloodso, who was her assistant, who again handled many of the details. If I mentioned the entire staff who worked so hard for our sake, I would be mentioning the 200 and some people who are employed by the court who worked to facilitate the move from one building, or several locations in fact, to another. I would like to focus my thanks upon not only those who've already been thanked, but the citizens who really made this financing possible. And through the monies generated by Lorraine County and the wise investment of those dollars that we have been able to now join all of the members of the Common Pleas bench and others who serve the public so well in a facility that they should be very proud of, that we are very content with. And I would like to thank all of you and hope that you will have an opportunity not to appear in any of our courts necessarily, but rather to enjoy seeing those facilities so that you can appreciate what we get to appreciate on a daily basis. In a few minutes, you will be hearing from Commissioner Mary Jo Vacy, who became one of the Commissioners of Lorraine County in 1989, which is... But before doing that, I am very pleased to be able to introduce the Southview High School Wind Ensemble under the direction of Tim Civic, who will be performing for you at this time. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you, Southview High School. I want to welcome and thank you for being here this morning. You know, the real is...